I would like to call this special board board meeting to order. The public schools of Robertson County Board of Education. On virtual, we do have Mr. Henry Brewer, Ms. Christie Fields, Mr. Terry Lotterer and Bradley Phillips. All right, this is Mr. Simmons. I'm sorry.
For bow your heads, head of Father, grace the Lord, we thank you. Thank you for your grace and your mercy, your grace and your mercy. What woke us up this morning, laid our bodies down to get rest. We ask you continue to bless our students as this test is coming up for them, that they may do the best they can, Lord. We thank you for all you do for us. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. So adoption of the gender. A motion has been made by Mr. Craig Lowry to adopt the gender. A second been made by Ms. Melissa Ocean.
Mr. Chair, I don't believe we need a closed session for legal issues. Might want to keep it on there just in case something comes up, but I don't think we're actually going to be needing it.
Okay.
Okay.
And we have a second by Ms. Melissa Ocean, all the favors. Say aye, all opposed? All right, information. Project narratives and invoices by Mr. Bible Lotterer. And Miss Erica Satch, I'm sorry.
Good, good, good evening Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson, board members. So in your packet, we have shared with you three different project narratives as related to the work that is continuing through at the S or three. So I'm not going to read all of this to you. I'm just going to hit some highlights for the projects so that we have an ideal of what has been done and what is still remaining. So the first thing in your packet should be a project narrative for the HVAC work at Lomerton Senior High. And again, I'll hit some of the highlights that have impacted this work. So third bullet down, as we began our work through the summer of 2024, there was a walkthrough that was conducted by Raymond Childress and his team and followed and was followed up the following week of June 6th. During that walkthrough, it was discovered that the building or some of the piping had asbestos in it. And of course, that work needed a space. The abatement had to take place before additional construction work could take place or remove piping for the new system to be installed. So you can see Raymond Childress and his team worked through June and the middle of July. So that impacted the work at Lomerton Senior High approximately six weeks. Snyder was able to get back into the building and continue their work on July 15th. So the original summer work was to convert or remove and change all equipment over to include the four pipe system, but the abatement did delay that. So if you move over to the next page, Snyder is preparing for their summer work this year. To begin on June 7th, the plan is to complete all the installation of remaining HVAC equipment replacements. Also to repair the ceiling, if you've been to Lomerton High over the past year, there's a large portion of the building that the ceiling grid has been removed. That work was done last year, so part of the summer work will be to replace that. So procurement, one of the biggest pieces that has impacted this work as well. As everyone knows, we secured all the equipment for the HVAC at Lomerton Senior High and other projects across the county through S or two, knowing that installation would take place with S or three funds. So we had to order the switchboards for this project. There was approximately over a year lead time. That is scheduled to be delivered on July 14th of this of this year. So there's a whole list of work that will be completed. And again, I'm not going to walk through all of that work that needs to be completed, but you can see there we will install the remaining air handler units, fan cores, and also at some point in time, we will get to the switchgear. Now, the switchgear unit will require us to shut the school down for approximately two weeks without power, that's a maximum two weeks. And we know, and we know what will happen if we shut up the power off and not have air in the building during the summer months for that extended period of time. So we're continuously in conversation with Snyder to see if that work can't be pushed back to December of 25 with definitely cooler weather and this Christmas break. Next project narrative addresses, the window replacement. At Pembroke Elementary, Oxenine and St. Paul's Elementary, again, these Snyder came into the county, visited all of our sites and determined that these were the three worst sites in the county that needed windows to be addressed. So these are not off the shelf windows. All of these windows had to be custom made. All of the product, to my understanding at this point, has been ordered and procured. We have started work at St. Paul's Elementary and that work is continuing continuing there. There was asbestos in the cafeteria, so we had to work around the abatement taking place there. We have also had to work around lead, lead abatement in the gym to replace those windows at St. Paul's Elementary. Once we had finished at St. Paul's Elementary, the next scheduled work would be at Oxenine Elementary. Again, abatement, asbestos abatement would need to take place at Oxenine Elementary as well. And the two teams will work in tandem as the abatement takes place. Snyder will come in behind them and replace the windows. Same thing will take place. Our plan is to start at Pembroke Elementary on June 16th. Minimal abatement needs to take place at St. Paul, I mean, I'm sorry, at Pembroke Elementary, and that would only be in the courtyard. Again, the teams will work in tandem to complete that work. All of the window work is scheduled to be done before school starts back for all students. Next, you have in your packet is just a brief narrative. As you're aware, we have occupied both of the multipurpose classrooms at St. Paul's High and Purnell Sweat. We have a few warranty items that are being completed there, and the engineer is ready to issue substantial completion on both of those projects within the next week as soon as we can iron out a couple of warranty issues with overhead doors and a cabinet that needs to be reinstalled at St. Paul's High. So again, this, this, the, this is the narrative for these three projects and kind of where, what the work that has been done prior to this school year, the work that was initially planned to be done over the summer and what work will need to take place possibly outside of those summer months and how it has impacted our ability to complete the work within the designated timeframe of the funding.
All right. Dr. Mannion.
Thank you, Bobby. Good, good report. Okay, the question was asked me. And I, I need you to just make it simple. Tell me why. I know the needs are there and desperately we need to get asbestos out. We need to get the windows fixed, and I agree with you. Why was this discovered at such a late time of the money cycle? That question was asked of me. In other words, we got the money and when? The S or money, when do we get the money?
Let me, let me answer that. It was not discovered at a late time. As we started some of that work, it identified itself then. That was really, these projects was the driving force behind asking for that extension that we got because we realized we couldn't do the work with students in the building. We realized in old buildings, we would find some other things. And for instance, we realized at Lomerton Senior, we're going to have some issues once we. So it was not a late date recognition. It was the timing and the scheduling, and that's why we asked Bobby, Bobby to put these reports in so we know that we did do the planning ahead of time, but we just couldn't do the work.
Right. And again, as we've stated several times, none of this work can be done with students in the building.
So the identification of the need was there. I know you said Mr. Childress came in and he said that whoops, there's asbestos here. We need to get asbestos out before we can do work. The question, and this is, I'm not against any of this, I'm for it. The question was asked of me, why was the lateness of the done with these projects? You know, because they were curious. Didn't we know we had those needs before? Why was the latest because, you know, they, they clipped the money from us. Hopefully the lawyers, good news tonight. But that was just an honest question that someone asked me. And I said, I, I knew about the children because the superintendent said that they were neighborhood. So I guess my question was, I hope the answer, what the superintendent saying is, we knew we had those needs all along. This was just an opportunity for us to address those needs. Am I wrong saying that?
Yeah, so the needs in HVAC and windows were a need all along. The discovery of the asbestos did not take place until we got into the building and started to do the work.
Okay.
And because this, they were using federal funds, which is something we've never done for buildings. This is the first time in my 25 year history. There were additional parameters you had to follow as far as procurement, but we started looking at the windows and if I'm not mistaken, October of 2022.
Well, let's go back further than that. Before we ever put a plan in place, we had Snyder to do a walkthrough in every building and to observe, and they did that for us for what they could see. And, and they stated at that point in time, once you start some of this work in these old buildings, you know what you're going to find. But to answer the question, we use that company, the experts, to walk every building and make recommendations to priority in terms of what we needed to do. So we did advanced planning before we ever set that to a plan, before we ever spent any money. So we have details of all that work.
Thank you.
And so, and so to further add clarity, the only building that added surprise in abatement in asbestos was Lomerton Senior. We had already planned with Snyder that when we went to St. Paul's Elementary, we knew there was asbestos there. When we go to Oxenine, we knew the windows, we already knew upfront that the abatement had to take place. And we also knew that that was only going to take place in the summer.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Legal update. Erica, I'm sorry.
I think somebody's got a raised hand, Chairman Leach.
All right. Mr. Terry.
Yeah, I have a question. So there was a process in place to where we had to request an extension of these funds. And so we put in a request for an extension and that, that request was granted. And then the decision was reversed. So give me, just refresh my mind on, on that again, if you don't mind.
So the Department of Public Instruction received an approval letter from the United States Department of Education on January the 22nd that authorized all of the North Carolina projects as being approved with a new extension date of March. I can't remember if it was March the 30th or March the 26th of 2026, but it was a date in March of 2026.
Okay.
March.
Okay, so, so we received word in January that we were approved, right?
We didn't, PSRC did not. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction did. I sent an email to DPI on February the 21st, just asking because we had not received any notification one way or the other. And our PSRC received that notification on February the 21st.
So, so what was the plan? What was the contingency plan for us have we not received that, that, that approval? Because my, my big question is, how, how, how much? How much exactly are we on the hook for? And what were the plans for that, just in case the approval didn't go through in the beginning?
Quite honestly, Mr. Terry, there'd already been three major projects, S or one, S or two, and gear funds that Department of Public Construction in the state of North Carolina had received extensions on. S or three was the only one that public schools could be included in, but the state had already received those three major extensions. All the conversations when these funds were originally given to us in 2021 indicated there would be an extension. And everybody that we talked to, including lawyers, including NCDPI, including the state of North Carolina, did not give us the need to have a contingency plan. They all indicated that we would receive approval, which we did. So the only time we started focusing on contingency is when that was reversed because all of the advice and the information we'd receive from all the powers that be indicated, it would not be a problem in getting the extension request. And that was the case initially because we did receive the extension.
Mr. Chair, if I may, and Richard, you may want to address this. All of that funding went to DPI. So we did not receive any direct communication from the federal level.
That's correct.
Communication went to DPI and then they were responsible to communicate with us. And that may or may not always happen in the time domain. Richard, you want to address that because they're the guarantees.
I think you just, you just covered it. The state is the grantee for these funds. We are sub-grantees, and so the money gets distributed to us through the state from the federal government.
And DPI has indicated to us that they were working under the oppression that they had a year to get in place the next process, next step. So that's why they had not reached out to us by the February 21st date because they, in their direct communication they received, they would have until March the 28th of 2026 to spend these funds. So they were developing a plan of action to communicate to us.
Okay, I had one more question, and that was, do we know? If this doesn't work out, how much exactly are we on the hook for right now?
Yes, yes, sir.
Terry, and that's a great question. Part of that 14 plus million is installment. We have the equipment that's been paid for, and, and so part of that money is just installment. We can pull those teams off and wait it out until we get. So actually, Bobby, help me, it's about five million that we actually got to find the funds for at this point, correct?
Right, so in when, yeah, so Ms. Erica is going to go over that, but I do know the windows were about 4.7 million. And then the remaining would be what was left in HVAC work in the two buildings at Purnell Sweat and St. Paul's.
And so I included the invoice breakdown. DPI has asked us to show invoices either paid and or incurred in three different phases. So what we paid out prior to March the 28th of 2025, anything that was paid after that date, but prior to May the 24th was a new date they gave us based on the information Mr. Schwartz has shared. That's the new date that some of the other states that sued the federal government have been given to submit invoices. So the, the invoice spreadsheet that I included shows prior to March the 28th, we had paid out 1,142,381.64. After March 28th, we've paid out 1,503,537 and 54 cent. There are invoices that have been sent to PSRC that we have not paid, but work has been done and the expense has been incurred in a total of 3,359,856.55. Those three items together total 6,5775.73, leaving a balance that has not yet been incurred or paid of 8.3. This is the information that we recently submitted to DPI as part of North Carolina getting involved in submitting the information based on the other lawsuit, even though we're not a part of that lawsuit. So this information was submitted to them on May the 22nd.
So Erica, if I may, of that total amount, we're still waiting on reimbursement for how much?
We're waiting on reimbursement that we have paid out of 2,645,919.18.
That there's no question we qualify for because that was already prior to.
The May 24th date. That's correct.
All right, Mr. Brick.
Ms. Erica, help me understand where the money we approved that came out of the reserve, the 2 million that we approved came out of the reserve, where is that at on this?
So the 1,142,381 and 64.
Okay.
And then the 971,600.
Mr. Curry.
Okay. We have all the materials needed to complete these projects in now. All those in.
Windows are in the, what we are waiting on now in terms of HVAC would be the switchgear that is expected to be delivered July 14th.
Okay. Now, materials, is all of it paid for? Or is that part of what not, has not been paid for?
So all HVAC equipment has been covered. All, nothing in windows has been paid for yet because we covered all of windows out of S or three.
Okay. And then what is left would be labor and whatever has to be done.
Correct.
Windows or HVAC, we go.
No, all of windows, including material and labor, would need to cover. Only thing that's left in HVAC is labor.
Labor. So let me, one more follow up, excuse me. Basically, we are looking at a little over eight million. It's total. Is that what we don't have or that's what we're looking that has not been promised some way or another in these appeals?
Well, quite honestly, we haven't been promised any of it. We are following the protocol outlined by the attorneys that the other states that sued the federal government are following. And they've been told that as long as they submit what has been paid out or incurred by May of 2024, they would get approved for that. But we have not received that yet. That's part of what Mr. Schwartz is here to talk about tonight and for us to get the resolution so we can possibly be included in that conversation.
So let me clarify that, brought in that, that question. S or three were approved, right? No question about that, which means this 14 point something was approved for us to use. That money's there. We believe it's rightfully our money. And we're jumping through hoops in, in a sense to reapply for money that we've been authorized. Everything was pre-audited, which means we certified that we had all the documentation. Everything was pre-audited, which means we certified that we had all the documentation that our plan had been approved and that the money was available at the federal level and the state level. So I'm going to say it that way because that's how it really is.
Absolutely. And I do want to reiterate that we've gone through about ten different processes prior to any of this happening to verify that the funds were obligated on time like was requested. We submitted additional documentation in November twenty four to DPI as part of the extension process that was submitted to United States Department of Ed that was processed. DPI received the approval that granted us the fourteen million dollars at January the twenty second of two thousand and twenty five from the United States Department of Education.
Mrs. Trey. Go follow up then, Mrs. Trey, because, okay. Go ahead.
Just a bit. So initially, it was the fourteen million, right? That's what we're trying to get that they are up in the air with, right, that we're following? So on here, it's saying about the eight million and that you guys paid the six million. Is that what?
Paid or incurred. So we've either paid invoices, the two point six million that I mentioned is what we've actually written physical checks for. But these companies have issued us invoices that total that amount.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to clarify. Okay.
But we don't have the funds to pay that.
None of that, none of the fourteen. So the six or the eight?
No, I'm sorry. We don't have. We've paid the two point six out of that six million, and I can add that if that'll be clear. The six million minus the two point six is what we've paid.
Okay. Thank you.
So that remaining four million, however that works out, we do not have that available to spend.
And then we have the eight million.
Correct. That has not even been invoiced yet, but it will be once they start doing work, installing, all of that. Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
We got Mr. Curry.
Trey. My comment to Ms. Erica and Mr. Bobby, this is to everybody. All we went through all the steps. You folks did all the steps of asking for extensions, doing what was supposed to be done. We knew there was this fourteen million, but we were given information that you got the money. Go ahead and do what you gotta do. Order it, get get work done. You know, I'm good. We did everything we did was supposed to do. And then on the date, the money was just pulled out and said, okay, you don't have this anymore. So that's brought us to where we're at now of being told you don't have the money. And we had done everything we were supposed to do. And that resolution tonight is supposed to say this is where I guess the board stands. And so you know, we're a part of trying to get this money, the whole the entire amount.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now we will have a legal update by Attorney Richard Schwartz.
Good evening. There are a lot of moving parts and moving pieces in this whole mess. And some of those moving parts are in the Southern District Federal Court in New York, where there's a lawsuit pending that I've talked to you about before that was filed by sixteen states and the District of Columbia against the U.S. Department of Education and Secretary Linda McMahon. The the recent submission that Erica was just talking about, where we submitted six million dollars plus under the column that says total incurred or paid by five twenty four, twenty five. We, working in conjunction with DPI and the North Carolina Attorney General's Office, we we are taking the position that the dispensation that was granted by the U.S. Department of Education to those sixteen states and the District of Columbia auto apply equally to us and everybody else who was denied. And so what happened in that case was after the first order was issued by the by the court up in New York, the federal court, the Department of Education sent out another letter and that letter was a Dear Colleague Letter dated May eleven, two thousand and twenty five. And the Dear Colleague Letter went to the state superintendents or their equivalents in those sixteen states and the District of Columbia. And it said to all of those folks, give us your bills for everything that's paid or incurred as of May twenty four, two thousand and twenty five, and we'll approve it. All right. And then also granted them an appeals process. So we're piggybacking on that. And even though that order doesn't apply to us, that letter doesn't apply to us. What we're saying to the Department of Education is you can't approve it for them who sued you and not approve it for us who didn't sue you and followed the appeals process that you laid out. The second line is there was an appeals process that was laid out by the U.S. Department of Education that was deficient in my humble legal opinion. And that was the appeal that we initially made, and the Department of Education denied all of the projects for North Carolina, not just Robinson County. They then said, however, we'll grant you another appeals process. And you've got to have your information on that one in by June sixth. So we'll be appealing that through the state. We don't do it directly because, as I mentioned, we're subgrantees. So so the state DPI has to make that appeal. And we're working with them and they're making that appeal through the process that was laid out for the non-plaintiff states, the ones that were not involved in the Southern District of New York federal lawsuit. A new development is that on Thursday of last week, what's today? Today is the twenty eighth. On Tuesday of last week, excuse me, the federal court in New York issued another order involving those sixteen cases, and they issued a temporary restraining order against the U.S. Department of Education enforcing the May eleventh letter, the Dear Colleague Letter that gave the deadline of May twenty four for submitting bills and invoices for approval, not really submitting bills and invoices, but for getting the funds for amounts that were incurred by that. And the the order directs the Department of Education and Secretary McMahon to process pending and future payment, pending and future payment requests for education stabilization funds, the S R funds submitted within their liquidation periods. And that was the original liquidation periods without delay and directs the defendants to file a status report to the court within one week, listing each plaintiff, for each plaintiff of all outstanding payment requests for the S R funding, including the amounts, the dates the requests were submitted, the anticipates it, anticipated dates that'll be processed. And further ordered that there was going, there's going to be a hearing held this coming week on June second to determine whether or not an injunction, a an injunction should issue that prevents the Department of Education from enforcing the May eleven letter that was sent out to those states. So we'll have another order from the court on or after June second dealing with all of that. So the, to summarize very quickly, what we're trying to do is piggyback on the original order that came out and the original letter that came out for the plaintiffs in the New York case that gave the May twenty four deadline. There has now been another order from that federal court saying you can't enforce that deadline that was in the May eleven letter that went to those states. So arguably, we don't, we can continue to submit even after the May twenty four deadline that DPI was using. And DPI has submitted all of our stuff based on that May twenty four deadline. And then the third thing is we're going through the second round of appeal from the process that was laid out by the U.S. Department of Education for the non-plaintiff states, including North Carolina. Still on the table is some discussion about whether North Carolina might join that lawsuit. That will be up to the Attorney General here in North Carolina, working in conjunction with the folks who are most directly affected, and that would be us and DPI. So with that update, other, I don't know if there are any questions on that, but we now have, you asked, you requested that we draft a resolution. And the Department of Public Instruction requested that we draft and pass a resolution setting out our position on this. And so in response to that, I have prepared, and you all have at your table, a resolution. But since this is being livestreamed and we have some folks online, I'm going to read the entire resolution. And then that will be up for the board to consider. So before I do that, are there any questions?
Mr. Schwartz, I've got a question. How much is, is this included in what we're already paying you as our attorney? Or is this on top of this legal work that's taking place for the public schools of Robinson County? Are we incurring any costs that way is my question?
Yes, you're get, you're paying our hourly rate on this.
Thank you.
All right. So this is a resolution by the Board of Education for the public schools of Robinson County, protesting the U.S. Department of Education's unwarranted rescission of previously approved S R three funding for contractually obligated and needed projects. Whereas it is the responsibility of the Board of Education for the public schools of Robinson County, PSRC, to allocate PSRC funds effectively and efficiently. And whereas PSRC is the most underfunded public school district in North Carolina by local per pupil spending, with all thirty seven of its schools designated Title One and serving a student population that is overwhelmingly economically disadvantaged and majority minority, and which includes a substantial proportion of American Indian students. And whereas on March eleven, two thousand and twenty one, Congress signed into law the American Rescue Plan, ARP, Public Law one seventeen dash two, which included an elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, three, S R three, to be distributed by the U.S. Department of Education to state education agencies to assist elementary and secondary education systems in responding to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas S R three funds were allocated to school districts across the country to address the academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs of students affected by the COVID nineteen pandemic, including school facility repairs and improvements to minimize the risk of virus transmission, reducing exposure to environmental health hazards, and enhancing indoor air quality in school buildings. And whereas PSRC was awarded S R three funds and responsibly allocated the funds for HVAC upgrades, new classroom construction, and window replacement projects to reduce the risk of virus transmission and exposure to environmental health hazards and to support student health needs in accordance with detailed guidelines and specific requirements for all projects, which were explicitly approved by the U.S. Department of Education and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, NCDPI. And whereas in conformity with federal guidelines, including those of the U.S. DOE for the use of S R three funds, NCDPI stated that, quote, COVID relief monies can be used for construction, renovation, repairing, and improving school facilities to reduce risk of virus transmission and exposure to environmental health hazards and to support student health needs, close quote. And whereas S R three funds were required to be obligated by September thirty, two thousand and twenty four, and school districts were initially given one hundred twenty days after the obligation deadline to liquidate the funds. But U.S. DOE, in compliance with the expressed intent of the U.S. Congress and recognizing the realities of COVID-related construction and supply chain delays, allowed a late liquidation extension for school districts that were not able to fully liquidate the funds within the specified time. And whereas PSRC was not able to fully liquidate funds one hundred twenty days after the initial deadline due to unexpected delays completely outside of the control of PSRC and NCDPI, on behalf of PSRC and other North Carolina school districts, applied for a late liquidation extension deadline. And whereas on January twenty two, two thousand and twenty five, the U.S. DOE, during the current administration under President Trump, issued a letter to NCDPI clearly stating that the U.S. DOE had approved NCDPI's request for an extension to liquidate S R three funds until March twenty eight, two thousand and twenty six, which meant that PSRC had until March twenty eight, two thousand and twenty six to liquidate those funds. And whereas on Friday, March twenty eight, two thousand and twenty five, at five oh three P M, U.S. DOE unexpectedly issued a letter to all state education chiefs abruptly notifying them that all or part of said S R three funds were being withdrawn or rescinded as of that date and that U.S. DOE was voiding any previously granted extensions alleging that the extensions were unjustified. And whereas the U.S. DOE's March twenty eight, two thousand and twenty five letter was sent at five oh three P M and stated that all S R three funds had to be liquidated by March twenty eight, two thousand and twenty five at five P M, which gave PSRC no opportunity to liquidate its previously approved S R three funds or receive reimbursement for its remaining obligated funds totaling fourteen million, three hundred twenty eight thousand, three hundred eighty two thou, three hundred eighty two dollars and ten cents. And whereas NCDPI applied for a reconsideration of U.S. DOE's rescission of funds on behalf of PSRC. And whereas on May eight, two thousand and twenty five, the U.S. DOE sent notice to NCDPI that it had denied all four reconsideration requests by PSRC because the projects did not provide direct services to students or mitigate the effects of COVID nineteen, despite U.S. DOE's previous position that these projects were approved uses of S R three funds that would mitigate the effects of COVID nineteen. And whereas PSRC reasonably relied on the U.S. DOE's guidance and representations and on the January twenty two, two thousand and twenty five letter from the Trump administration's U.S. DOE regarding the extended liquidation period and PSRC planned construction projects and timing for its previously approved projects contracts based on U.S. DOE's representation that funding existed and would be timely provided to PSRC through March twenty eight, two thousand and twenty six. And whereas all the remaining obligated contracts are underway and cannot be terminated, and the U.S. DOE is morally and legally obligated to honor its prior commitments. And whereas Secretary of Education Linda McMahon has recognized that, quote, debt doesn't go away. It gets transferred to others. If borrowers don't pay their debts to the government, taxpayers do, close quote. And whereas, consistent with Secretary McMahon's statement, if the U.S. DOE fails to restore the previously approved but now rescinded funds, the taxpayers of Robinson County and North Carolina will be forced to cover for the U.S. DOE's decision to reneg on its promises and or PSRC will be on, will be liable to its contractors and unable to complete the previously approved projects. And whereas incredibly, in its March twenty eight, two thousand and twenty five letter, U.S. DOE Secretary McMahon stated that the explicit prior approval of the extension, a guarantee and promise of the by the United States government, could not be relied upon. Quote, so you could not rely on the Department of Education adhering to its original decision, close quote. And whereas the funds were used or encumbered by PSRC in accordance with S R guidelines and within the scope of allowable allowable expenditures. And whereas the unconscionable rescission of these funds will result in significant negative impact on programs critical to student and staff health and success and on the financial stability of the PSRC and the county of Robinson. And now going by individual projects, HVAC replacement at Lumberton Senior High School. Whereas the HVAC system at Lumberton Senior High School is in the process of being replaced using S R three funds to ensure clean air and a safe learning environment for nearly two thousand students and staff, many from the populations most affected by the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas this project addressed the impacts of COVID nineteen by reducing the risk of virus transmission, reducing exposure to environmental health hazards and supporting student health needs. And whereas the project encountered unavoidable delays due to asbestos and mold abatement, extensive lead times on chillers and electrical switchgear, including some parts that have not been delivered as of today despite being timely ordered and due to safety constraints preventing work being done while students and staff are present. And whereas the withdrawal of S R three funds would limit PSRC's ability to compensate its contractors for work already performed and would prevent PSRC from being able to complete this crucial, this critical health project, despite all parts having been ordered and the project being fully designed, underway, and essential to both pandemic mitigation and future operations. And whereas the rescission of funding jeopardizes this project and places PSRC at risk of financial and legal exposure despite PSRC's good faith and now detrimental reliance on the promise of the United States government through the prior explicit written assurances from U.S. DOE. And now turning to the multipurpose classrooms at St. Paul's and Purnell Sweat High Schools. Whereas PSRC constructed modular multipurpose classrooms using S R three funds at St. Paul's High School and Purnell Sweat High School, which now safely serve over twenty seven hundred students with improved airflow and modern HVAC syst, C systems. hundred students with improved airflow and modern HVAC syst- C systems. And whereas these projects were intended to address the impacts of COVID nineteen by alleviating overcrowding, reducing the risk of virus transmission and exposure to environmental health hazards and supporting student health needs. And whereas these projects were expected to be complete in December twenty twenty four but faced unexpected delays due to weather and an unplanned soil stabilization project at St. Paul's High School. And whereas the school buildings are currently in use, but additional S R three funding is required to finalize payments to contractors and complete final punch list items. And whereas the rescission of funding jeopardizes the, these nearly complete projects and places PSRC at risk of financial and legal exposure despite good faith reliance on the promise of the United States government through the prior explicit written assurances from US DOE. And now turning to the window replacements at Oxendine.
If I may, sir, let me ask, on those projects, um, would it be helpful to add the language? Those buildings address Title Nine. That was part of our ongoing conversation, which I don't know that that would make a difference.
Uh, I think we need to just focus on the COVID on this. Turning now to the window replacements for Oxendine Elementary School, Pembroke Elementary School, and St. Paul's Elementary School. Whereas S R three funds were allocated for window replacement at multiple PSRC schools to address serious ventilation concerns with rotting, non-functional windows that prevented effective HVAC operation and safe and healthy air circulation. And three schools have yet to be completed due to unexpected complications with asbestos. And whereas these projects aligned with CDC and ARP guidance are scheduled for completion when students are not present and the work can be completed in summer twenty twenty five without disrupting the education process so as to avoid compacting, uh, compounding COVID learning loss. And whereas these projects are intended to address the impacts of COVID nineteen by reducing the risk of virus transmission, reducing exposure to environmental health hazards and supporting student health needs. And whereas PSRC has already ordered the necessary windows, all of which were specifically designed and ordered for this project and planned all work in accordance with timelines established based on the March twenty twenty six deadline that was previously approved for S R three fund use. And whereas the rescission of funding jeopardizes these projects and places PSRC at risk of financial and legal exposure despite good faith reliance on the promise of the United States government through the prior explicit written assurances from US DOE. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County, one, formally request that the US DOE grant NCDPI's appeal of the US DOE's decision to rescind previously approved S R three funds and extensions essential for the completion of the critical PSRC projects described in this resolution. And two, asserts that rescinding these funds disproportionately harms one of North Carolina's poorest school districts undermining the goals of the American Rescue Plan. And three, declares that these projects were planned, contracted, and initiated in strict compliance with federal and state guidance and delays were caused by factors completely outside of PSRC's control. And four, certifies that all related obligations were made no later than September thirty twenty twenty four in compliance with federal guidelines and that the obligations are directly tied to pandation, pandemic mitigation and learning recovery. And five, authorizes and directs the superintendent, legal counsel, and PSRC representatives to pursue all available administrative and legal remedies to restore these funds and complete these projects critical to the health and safety of students and staff. And five, urges the North Carolina General Assembly, North Carolina DPI, U.S. Department of Education, the North Carolina Congressional Delegation, and the U.S. Congress to take all necessary steps to advocate for PSRC and to reinstate and safeguard S R three funding for PSRC and districts similarly impacted by economic hardship and good faith project delays. And seven, request the US DOE to exercise its discretion and revoke its unjustifiable retroactive rescission of the remaining obligated funds in the amount of fourteen million three hundred twenty eight thousand three hundred eighty two dollars and ten cents and allow PSRC to use such funds through March twenty eight twenty twenty six to fulfill the lawful and equitable intent of the American Rescue Plan and to prevent a devastating financial disruption to an already underfunded and impoverished school system. And eight, directs the superintendent and legal counsel to deliver this resolution to the entire North Carolina Congressional Delegation, including Congressman Mark Harris and Congressman David Rousher and U.S. Senators Tom Tillis and Ted Budd, the Honorable Governor Josh Stein, the Honorable Attorney General of North Carolina Jeff Jackson, the Honorable State Superintendent Mo Green, attorneys for the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, appropriate members of the North Carolina General Assembly, including Speaker of the House Destin Hall, Senate President Pro Tem Phil Berger, State Senator Danny Earl Britt Jr., State Representative Brendan H. Jones, State Representative Jared Lowry, and to the U.S. Department of Educate, Secretary of Education Lyndon McMahon, and President Donald J. Trump. Adopted this twentieth day of May twenty twenty five by the Board of Educat- Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County. This resolution is ready for a motion for approval, a second, and then any discussion and then a vote.
Do we have, uh? Was it John Simmons?
If we was to get in on this lawsuit, do we get any money back for attorney fee concern?
Uh, no. Uh, but we're not in the lawsuit. And if, if we got in on the lawsuit, it would be the state going in on the lawsuit. So it would be the North Carolina Attorney General doing that.
Okay.
Dr. Manuel?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve this resolution as written.
Second.
Motion on the table by, uh, Dr. Manuel to approve this, uh, resolution as presented. And we have a second by Mr. Ian Brewer. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have.
Past unanimously.
Past unanimously.
All right. Thank you. In that case, Mr. Chair, I don't think we have a need for a closed session for legal issues.
All right. Do we have a motion on, do we have a motion to adjourn? That's a question. All right. A motion, uh, a motion being on the table to adjourn by Ms. Melissa Ocean. There's been a second by Ms. Krista Monroe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.